Good evening and welcome to the Mantino Village Board Meeting for Monday, July 1st, 2019. Let's call the meeting order. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Boyce.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Dole.
Here.
Crockett.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
We have a quorum. Tonight, as always, we begin with the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from our regular board meeting from June 17th, 2019 that were included in everyone's packet, and hopefully everyone has had the opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, corrections in the minutes that have been submitted by the clerk?
I made the motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Phillips, seconded by Dole to approve the minutes. Roll call, please.
Phillips.
Yes.
Dole.
Yes.
Boyce.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Geske.
Motion carries. Public participation, Mr. LaRocque, do you have anybody that's signed up to address the board?
We do. We have Nicole Cartier who wants to talk about the upcoming Mantino Triathlon Club.
Nicole, come on up and introduce yourself and...
Should I hold on to this? Hello.
There you go.
That's better?
You should pull out of there if you wanted to.
That'll work. Can you hear me? Is that good?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, I'm Nicole Cartier. I'm the president of the Kinkakee Triathlon Club. This is Dan Gerber, and he is my right-hand man with the Kinkakee Triathlon Club, planning the Mantino Triathlon and Duathlon. So, we've done this five years in a row now, and we've done it three years. The other directors did the first two. So, this is our third year doing this as the race directors. It does benefit the Veterans Home. We keep that solid every year. Last year, the last two years, we took the duathlon money and we donated that to Riverside Resolve. However, Riverside Resolve has resolved, and we no longer have them as our recipient or as volunteers to help us with transition setup. So, our biggest thing is, is we are looking for volunteers. Our participants are up 51% compared to where we were last year at this time, and our volunteers are down 21% compared to where we were last year at this time. So, we're looking for volunteers. Little scout guy back there. We are looking for some specifics. If you're on the course, you can volunteer from your own home. You can put your sprinklers out. You can play music. You can come out with your kids, bang some pots around, ring some bells, cheer on the racers. Main Street going down to the Sportsman's Club from 7:00 to 10:00 is pretty difficult to get out on July 27th. So, if you live on that part of the course, plan accordingly for those three hours that it's pretty difficult to get out. And Fourth Street?
Yes.
Fourth Street is pretty heavy on the bikes from about 8:00 to 9:30. So, if you live on that road, plan accordingly also if you are planning to leave. But if you do live on those roads during the race, in your home during the race, come on out and cheer on the racers. They will be thrilled to have people out there. Last year, we had a huge community support, which was amazing. The cheerleaders were there from the Mantino Wildcats. That was fantastic. The band.
Yeah, this year, the band, Dan Tripp and the band, they're going to be up at the high school playing patriotic songs as competitors go by. And also, Coach Haynes from the football team are going to send some muscle out this year to help us set up the bike corral and the things, you know, help out setting it up and turning it down. I think that's really great that the young people are really getting involved and volunteering. I know we had this storm, and I seen like four or five kids going from yard to yard volunteering and helping. I think that's really awesome. Like, see some adults get out there, you know, show the kids, you know, they support what you're supporting. That'd be great, too.
And we don't have a recipient yet for the duathlon money. So, if we do have a group that sends the most volunteers, that we will be happy to donate the duathlon money to that group. So, if you are a group with kids, high schoolers, teenagers, that want to come out and volunteer, definitely let us know. We have a new way of signing up, the same way you sign up for the race. It's on the Mantino Triathlon website. You can go on there and sign up. You can put your shirt size in, so we can order you guys shirts. We have Dunkin' Donuts that always supports us every race, and they provide us with plenty of bagels and donuts and coffee for in the morning. We have Brickstone for finishing. We have Sammy's Pizza for finishing also and for the volunteers. And we have Del Monte. We have Mantino Ford.
Yeah, they are a big sponsor this year. Along with the Mantino Legion, they always are a good sponsor, too.
So, we are looking for two course marshals that could either ride a motorcycle with somebody on the back that could just kind of check on the bikers, make sure they're okay, make sure nobody's drafting. I'll show them that. Or, since this is such a fantastic golf cart community, we could have a couple of people driving the course on golf carts as well, which would be fantastic. So, if anybody wants to do that, let us know. We'd love to have you.
And the way to contact you is through the website? Is there a phone number or just strictly the website?
The website is the best way. We do have an email. It's trikatriathlonclub.com, trikatriathlonclub@gmail.com. And the website, if you just Google Mantino Triathlon, the website comes up. I think it's mantinotriathlonandduathlon.com. We changed our website, the Kinkakee Triathlon Club, to just the Mantino Triathlon.
You know, did our sign get hit by lightning or something? So, I don't know. Was there, is that going to be up and going? Is it something that we can put on our electronic sign or that Sarah could potentially put on the chamber sign?
Yeah, we'll definitely do that. It is broken right now. We're waiting on a part. We're not sure when that's going to be, and hopefully in the next couple of days it'll be in. Get it working again.
So, if you could maybe contact or stop by and see Chris at the Village Hall. If we get our electronic sign up and going this week, we could potentially put something out there for, you know, to have, you know, for volunteers to contact, you know, the website.
Yeah.
And also, if you could contact Sarah. She's at the Village Hall, so then potentially maybe they might be able to put it on the chamber sign that's on the west side of town. Yeah, like, to get the word out for you, to get as many volunteers as possible. I know that you bring in, you know, lots and lots of people to, you know, to town for that day, and they're, you know, they're all, you know, come from all over the state. So, it's a good showcase for our community. So, we'd like to make sure that you have enough people to monitor everything that you need to monitor. It sounds like you've got a lot of contacts already with the state of the cheerleaders, the school, you know, but maybe the Chamber of Commerce. I know Indian Oaks, they bring us a lot of volunteers when we have our community cleanup. There might be some church groups that are out there that could potentially see the signs or might be watching this broadcast that could potentially do it for, you know, community service hours or potentially for some financial reward if you've got something at the end that you're looking to donate.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. That would be absolutely amazing.
How many recent, how many people, participants do you usually get?
So, the last two years, we've been right at 200. And last I checked, I think we're at 167 signed up right now. So, normally, by July 1st, we're not at the 100 mark. So, we're well above that. I think we're going to break that 200. Because we're from people from outside of the community that are like, "Oh, Mantino's just such a beautiful little town. It is a great downtown. We just love it." So...
Well, we appreciate you having it here and showcasing the community. Obviously, the police will work hand-in-hand with you, and they actually have a golf cart now, too, that could potentially be involved, or I assume would be bikes, golf carts. We've got all the, all the different equipment that, you know, we just need the people to be out there and ride them.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for choosing Mantino. Anyone else that's signed up to address the board?
No, that's it.
Village President's report. As far as, you know, the things I have are, have on here, a presentation for Heroes Hogs and Hot Rods. I'm Eric Peterson. Eric, do you want to come up and give us a little rundown of what you've got planned?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Chris. Let me be here. So, for everybody that doesn't know me, my name's Eric Peterson. To give you the long and short of it, as it pertains to this, I've lived in Mantino since 2007. Anybody here that was in the area with Charlie Company came back in 2009. I was in Charlie Company as the squad leader. We came back in 2009. I deployed. I became a paramedic at Riverside Ambulance after that, and then deployed another five times between Iraq and Afghanistan. After coming back in 2009, everybody in Charlie Company, as you may know, we all made it back. Two years later, Brent Ortega, a man we deployed with, decided to take his life. A couple of years after that, another man I deployed with took his life, and then a couple of years after that, another one. And after that, I started a nonprofit called Project Headspace and Time. And what I look to do is to bring veterans of the community together with the community because, as we all saw when Charlie came, when Charlie Company came back, we live in a community that's extremely supportive of its veterans. Just sometimes, they may not know how to show it. And we have a lot of veterans, I think, in this community that need the support of their community but don't know how to ask for it. So, I started volunteering a lot at the Veterans Home, at the Prince Home, things like that. And we did some smaller events. If you guys were aware of Ray Ali's canoe, Dan was there, when we rebuilt Ray Ali, World War II Veterans' canoe, and put him out on the, at the Sportsman's Club. And now, what I'm looking at doing is I'm looking at expanding the Prince Home, either via tiny homes or rehabbing one of the old wings. And I have a meeting out there with their administrator and a civil engineer and an architect for the 12th of July. So, what we're trying to do to raise awareness for that and raise funds is by having this event, Heroes Hogs and Hot Rods. What it consists of is a barbecue competition, a car show, a strongman competition, live, excuse me, live music and food and craft beer, along with craft vendors. We, it's going to take place on August 10th from noon to 11:00 PM is what we're looking at. Now, I have walked the area where we want to do this with Sarah and everybody that's involved with, excuse me, all of our committee members that have been working with us on this event. We are looking at having the stage at Second, at the Square on Second. We're looking at having craft vendors on Second Street, the strongman competition on Main Street, the barbecue competition in the parking lots of Main Street, and then the car show in those two parking lots just to the east of Main Street. Now, being that this is the first time that we are having this event, I would imagine, you know, that volunteers would be a little low, attendees would be a little low. But what we're starting to see is we're having to put caps on all of this stuff because we are having more people that are interested in participating than initially anticipated, which is a good problem to have, but still a problem. So, we're looking at capping the barbecue teams to 30, and the car show cars to 100. That would fill up the two parking lots to the east of Main Street. We are looking at closing down a possible Main Street from Second Street to Third. We would not need to close it south of Second. We would obviously want to keep as much open as we can, and possibly the alley behind the police station to public traffic and things like that closed off as well. I've talked to, I pulled a few strings with a couple of the guys that I deployed with, and they are looking at landing a medevac helicopter at Legion Park. I spoke with the folks over at the silos just north of there that own that area, along with the Legion. They have said that that's okay to use that space, providing a certificate of insurance. So, I've been working on putting all that stuff together. I've been keeping Sarah and Chris in the loop with everything that we've been doing and coming up with here. And that's kind of, I guess, the long, the long and short of it. We are in adjacency to what I talked about as far as the events. We're looking at having that medevac helicopter. One of my friends who's a K-9 officer at Bradley wants to have a K-9 demonstration also at Legion Park. And we're also looking at having face painters at Leo Hasset inside for the, for the kids. It's a free event, not charging anything. We're only charging $5 to get into the beer tent. But by doing this, hopefully, we can raise some awareness and get some more people on board for what we're trying to accomplish.
Anybody have any questions?
No, you've been talking about this for a while, so it's good to see it come together. It sounds like you've put a lot of thought into this, so...
I'm trying.
Well, I talked with Eric about it almost a month ago at the chamber outing, and he, you know, and he reminded me about when Company C came, came back from their deployment of, you know, several years ago, and we had the reception here. And he was in one of the buses that came through Mantino that day, and the town, I mean, the whole area turned out. But Mantino really turned out for the return of Selvacy, and that was one of the times that he told me that that's when he decided he wanted to live in Mantino. And, you know, so, we're really glad that, you know, you're here and that you're, you know, choosing Mantino to have this event. We can, we will, you know, we have a lot of festivals, obviously, you know, and that's one of the reasons that we created the square on Second Street. So, you know, we're able to hopefully take care of some of the needs that you have. The key here is to make sure that the police and fire are, you know, on board with everything that's going on, and they're aware of what's, you know, taking place. So, they can make sure that all the, you know, they have plenty of officers on staff and that the fire department knows everything that's happening. Obviously, by keeping Sarah and Chris in the loop, they will obviously keep the, you know, the police and fire notified of everything that's going on. I mean, we think it's a, it's a great thing, the event that you're going to have. Hopefully, it'll be well attended. The weather will cooperate, and this will be something that's going to, you know, that turns into something on an annual basis that, you know, that you can continue to raise funds. We appreciate you choosing here, and we'll do whatever we can do to make sure that you have a successful day.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only other item I have on Village President's report is just a letter I received from Mantino High School that I'd like to read. Dear President, Nugent, and the Village Board, we are writing to express our sincere appreciation for your assistance throughout the 2018-19 school year. We hope that we can continue to work in a collaborative relationship to meet the needs of our young citizens. I'd like to thank the police department for the professionalism they exhibit every time we have a call. Our police are some of the finest, and you should be proud of the job they do day in and day out. We are thankful for the wonderful training provided to the staff back at the end of April, and we look forward to continue this training in the future and hope that we never have to use it. The school year, we had, this school year, we had a theme of "Whatever It Takes." It was a true pleasure to work in a collaborative relationship this past year with Officer Tobek. We consider him one of the finest school resource officers in the state of Illinois. He did whatever it took on several occasions to serve the students and the staff. Our collaborative working relationship has allowed for the community pride to be linked between the village and the school. Ms. Sarah Marion is an asset, in my opinion, to the Chamber of Commerce and the village. We also appreciate the continued efforts to link art projects with the community and are very proud of the birdhouse project. Thank you for taking interest in the schools and especially an interest in the young people of our community. Schools cannot do what they do without the community's support. We look forward to working with you again during the 2019-2020 school year. Signed by Roger Schnitzer, the principal, Tricia Weber, the associate principal, and Doug Winsell, the assistant principal, athletic director. So, just wanted to read that, just to let everyone know that, you know, the program that was started was Officer Tobek. Obviously, it was a three-year program. This is the first year. Obviously, it's been a great success. I think it's something that's, you know, obviously, not just great for the school, I think it's great for the community and for the, for the police department. And we're glad that the schools and district feels the same way. I have nothing further. Village Administrator's report, Mr. LaRocque.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. LaRocque.
Committee reports, Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no items tonight. That's all you have.
Properties and Recreation, Mr. Martin.
I have no items tonight either.
No, you can go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Public Safety and Health, Mrs. Dole.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Sam. All right, well, I have one ordinance, 1909. An ordinance amending Title IV Police Regulations, Chapter 2, Minor's Curfew by repealing Section 4-2-9 Tobacco and of the Municipal Code for the Village of Mantino, and by amending Title IV Police Regulations, Chapter 1, Misdemeanor Code, Article 4, Offenses Involving Health, Safety, and Children by adding Section 4-1-4-18 Tobacco and Related Products of the Municipal Code for the Village of Mantino. The state of Illinois changed the law concerning the legal age for the sale and purchase of tobacco and related products. This ordinance incorporates those changes into village code. State law prohibits the sale of tobacco products, but this village ordinance takes it a step further by also prohibiting possession of tobacco products by persons under the age of 21. This new law effect, took effect today. Any questions? I think it was all over the news for everything else, so I guess we spend wide spread with that. My next meeting is Wednesday, July 10th, at 7:00 AM at the Village Hall Conference Room for Public Safety and Health Committee. Had a couple safety tips. Mantino just experienced a dangerous storm, and they can happen at any time. Driving immediately after a storm could be a bad idea, but there are times when you absolutely must get on the road. When that's the case, you need to take extra precaution and keep in mind some post-storm driving safety procedures to ensure you and your family get safe and sound from point A to point B. Pack an emergency kit. Be prepared for the worst, including the possibility of being stranded on the road. Pack a basic emergency kit and start with a full tank of gas. Drive with extreme caution. Road conditions after a damaging storm are wildly unpredictable. Proceed slowly and carefully to avoid driving over storm-borne debris like tree branches, metal, or broken glass that could damage your vehicle. Also, be aware of dangers above like low-hanging branches, damaged overpasses, and dangling power lines. Because roads and cars could be damaged, more people are likely to be walking on roadways, too. So, keep your eyes peeled for pedestrians and anyone who could be injured. Traffic lights may also be out, so take extra precaution at intersections, obey all road signs, and always give the right of way to emergency vehicles. Don't drive through floodwaters. Severe storms can cause serious flooding. In the United States, floods take more lives than other natural disaster, and more than half of flood-related drownings occur when a vehicle tries to drive through floodwaters. Never drive through a road with standing or rushing water, even if it doesn't look that deep. The water depth can be deceiving, and it's extremely dangerous at even the shallowest of depths. Six inches of water can cause a vehicle to lose control or stall. One foot of water will float many vehicles. Two feet of rushing water will carry away most trucks, SUVs, and cars. Instead, obey all road closure signs and find alternate routes to your destination if you come upon any signs of flooding. Stay away from downed power lines. Under no circumstances should you drive over a downed power line. It's impossible to tell if a power line is electrified or not, even if you don't see sparks. Stay informed, stay in touch by tuning into the local weather's channel. There could be a time when you can't avoid driving after a storm. But if you heed these safety tips and follow the rules of the road, you can get to your destination safely. Also, I wanted to remind everybody about the Fourth of July. Safety tips. Lead the fireworks to professionals. An estimated 10,500 injuries were treated in hospital emergencies rooms nationally. On July 3rd, there's a professionally-done firework show at the Mantino Sportsman's Club, and you can also view this in many houses on the lake and in Legacy Park. Residents are encouraged to watch the firework show instead of lighting their own. There's a Village of Mantino fireworks ordinance that fines that can be up from $100 to $750 for using fireworks. Regularly check, and since it's been so hot lately, regularly check on the elderly. With the weather getting warmer, please check on someone that might not have air conditioning. And also, remember, the kids are out of school, so be mindful that they are riding their bikes, running and walking, and not always paying attention to their surroundings. Be an alert driver. Not for the fun in Mantino, since Sam passed this along to me. We've got movies in the park on Friday, and I'm not sure how to pronounce this. The Croods? Is that how you say this? Croods, C-R-O-O-D-S?
Cru- cruze.
Crueds, okay. I thought crude would be for you, so...
I have music.
That time starts at 7:30 with activities and the movie at dusk. And then July 19th, the Stingrays, and the, probably people like me would appreciate, the old days in the rock and roll bands. So, that starts at 7:30 to 9:30. So, that's a couple of things coming up in, in July that put on your schedules and be there and enjoy it. And that's all I have.
Hey, Mrs. Dole, as long as we're talking about the storm, Jim, would you want to talk a little bit about the public works and, you know, you guys, I know you had guys who got called out last night. We're out for several hours. The, in the course of the next several days, there's going to be a lot of cleanup going on. There's branches all over the place, but we're not going to be able to get to them all. And one day, if you want to give a little rundown as to what the public works kind of encountered and what you plan on over the course of the next few days, I realize that this week is a busy week anyway with the Fourth of July coming up and the grass growing and all the other things that you had, you need to, you know, you had on your schedule, that this is not something that was scheduled, obviously. So, just let people know what they can expect as far as, you know, the public works, participation in the next couple of days.
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, we were out yesterday. Did several crews, everything from backhoe and dump trucks picking up big winds to crews just getting big debris off the road and then a crew with a chipper truck. We were able to get a truck and chipper from Bradley, Illinois. They lent us that for the next week here. So, we'll have two crews out, north side and south side of town. Basically, the older parts of town with the bigger trees, we'll be working those areas first and foremost. You know, I'm in South Creek. Mr. Geske's out, out west, and, you know, we got guys out in Rock Creek. Those areas, the trees aren't as big, so it's not a biggest problem. The sweeper will be out pretty soon as well. If anybody wants to grab branches off the street, small branches, the sweeper can't pick that up. It can handle leaves. It can handle twigs, but when you get into branches... So, we're basically going to have to go street by street and pick up branches by hand and then, then be able to send the sweeper. So, everybody that gets their, their brush out today, tomorrow, we're going to be hitting the whole town the whole week. We'll be off on Thursday for the 4th, and we'll probably plan on repeating every route again then towards the end of the week and then next week as well.
What about people that want to, if they've got a truck and can move stuff on their own, is there a spot that they can take them?
I would say at this point, just get it out front. I think moving it around is going to create, create a lot more work for us in the long run. If I got two trucks out picking up material, that'd be a lot better than getting material moved and then us having to double back and pick it up. If you really want to move it, that'd be fine. South Main is an option. You can even bring it down to the public workshop as well. But at this point, with the two trucks being out, we should be able to get a lot done.
And you want to explain how we ended up with a truck from Bradley?
Yeah, I made a phone call to Terry Memiga down in Bradley, Illinois there. He's the public works director down there. And we got a good system in Mantino and other communities around here where, you know, we've got equipment that we've put out on, loaned it out to other communities and events, and it's nice to see that come back to us. So, I made the phone call last night, and he made it happen this morning. So, we've worked with Piattone in the past, but Piattone had 50 mile an hour winds, so they've got, you know, 30 trees down, and we've got 130 trees down. So, that's where we're probably kind of guessing at right now.
And you said Bradley doesn't use their chipper as much, or they, they do it differently?
Yeah, they, they're in, they've combined their, their, their monies or whatever else with Bourbonet and Bourbonet Township, and they have a, instead of a chipper, they, they burn all their material. So, they got a big setup where they just go and they burn all the material.
So, if people see the truck from Bradley that's got, you know, in town, it's, you know, it's, being out here, the Mantino employees are operating.
Correct. Yeah, actually, we got really lucky because they have a truck with a hood and a chipper as opposed to just a chipper. And we've done in the past where we just tilt up the dump truck, and you can get about a third amount of chipper debris than you can with the hood. So, we got really lucky. can with the hood. So, we got really lucky in that regard, so...
You do have a lot of mulch available at some point in time.
There's gonna be a lot of mulch. South Main, we're gonna be dumping a lot. I mean, if people, they want mulch, it's not the best stuff in the world, but it's really good for gardens or, you know, stuff to maybe put underneath and then add a nice, a nice colored mulch on top of it, so...
So, the recommendation is put the stuff out, you know, we eventually get there.
We'll get it.
I know the Village Hall got a lot of calls today. We know the stuff, you know, that, you know, that, you know, the town's inundated with branches.
Yeah.
You know, it's gonna take a certain period of time. You know, there's no area that's getting, you know, overlooked. It's just, we can only do so many with, you know, with the manpower and the equipment that we currently have. The tree services, they're all busy too, doing private stuff. So, it's not like we can go out and hire somebody else to come in and do anything for, you know, a week or two weeks because those guys are all booked.
They're all booked. I know ComEd has a crew in there also taking care of, you know, some of the lines that have trees on them. The police and fire, they did a great job yesterday getting ahold of us. And, you know, we were bouncing around all over town, you know, just trying to get the streets cleaned up for starters. I know there was a lot of people driving around yesterday just looking, you know, that, that kind of creates a little more for us to deal with. So, we were basically closing off roads left and right because, you know, we've got chainsaws, we've got bucket trucks, skidsters, backhoes. We had every, virtually all our, our equipment out. And, you know, if people could just stay home and just relax and just, you know, and wait out the storm, that'd be a lot better for future. And I'm complaining, but it's, it creates a lot more work for police, fire, and us, you know.
Along those lines, I want to thank Ryan Marion because he went out for a few hours last night as well. And, you know, code enforcement is not a very popular job. Kind of shows his dedication to the community that he went out on his own time and helped Public Works clean up some of that, so...
Now, is most of town back with power?
No, there's still some outages right now. Up in the, I looked just before I came here, there's probably a couple hundred customers that are still out. I see ComEd's in the alley over here.
I saw ComEd over here, so...
And I got a text from Scott Bertrand a couple hours ago saying that, you know, there's still some outages, but they're working on it. Looks like, hopefully, most of them will be up by midnight or 2:00 this morning. But there is still gonna be a few that are probably gonna be going till tomorrow. So, you know, they're, they're obviously, same thing, they're, they're out there working. They, they've got a lot of crews, but they've got a huge territory to cover that got hit. And if you look at their outage map on the comed.com website, you can kind of see where the outages are at and, you know, get an idea as to when you're, you know, you might get, get restored. Again, you know, everybody wants to, you know, get right away, but there's only, you know, so many hours in a day and so many crews that can go out and do it. I'd love to have everything picked up in the town looking, you know, clean again by the Fourth of July. I understand that's not gonna happen just because there's, you know, so much, you know, debris that's all over the place and it takes a long time to get the branches and send them through the chipper and get it all emptied out. And, you know, again, like I said, it's not something that you necessarily had on your schedule anyway. So, there's other things that are getting pushed back for this week because of, because of that. I assume Cole Philbin was on the job also.
Cole.
Cole.
Oh, yeah.
Cleaning the greens.
Yeah. Who's there?
Actually, I saw several kids out. I think somebody else mentioned it, going neighbor to neighbor cleaning up and helping out people and they were raking and...
You know, we joke about that, but, but when we have a large, you know, heavy rain, it could happen, you know, tonight, tomorrow, in the next couple of days. And if the, with all the branches and everything that are in the street, when the drains get filled up, then the, then the streets flood. So, it's, it is important to clean those drains out on your, in the corner. And even though you guys might have done it earlier in the day, once it rains again, all that debris gets, you know, blocks it up again. So, anybody that can help in that regard, you know, it makes a, it does make a big difference.
There's streets that are covered with like tiny little branches and leaves right now where it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of work to get them all cleaned up, so...
And you get a decent rain, all that stuff is gonna go to the, to the drain and it's gonna stop it from, you know, from functioning. So, like I say, it's gonna take time, but just hopefully, you know, bear with us and be, be patient because we are, we are working on it. And I see you got the flags up today, too.
We're, we're about at three quarters of the way. We actually had a lot of banner damage too. So, we were going around fixing banners and putting flags up at the same time. And, you know, we had just enough guys go ahead and start that up to make sure that we're ahead of the holiday. But, yeah, it's, hopefully, no more thunderstorms or 75 mile an hour winds for the next couple of days, so...
Thank you, Mr. Doe. Planning and zoning, Mr. Crockett is not here. He does not have any items on his agenda, but he does have a planning and zoning committee meeting scheduled for July 23rd at 7:00 AM at the Village Hall Conference Room and a planning commission meeting scheduled for July night at the Village Boardroom. Finance, Mr. Geske.
Thank you, Mayor. Another item I have is paying the bills in the amount of $104,050, which includes tip bills, tip one, $24,997.82. We have a finance committee meeting scheduled for July 10th at 7:00 AM.
Just one item on the payment of the bills too. I had it under my agenda and I did not comment on it. One of the bills that we are paying is a $8,000 donation to the Mantino Sportsman's Club for the fireworks display. As Mrs. Doe mentioned the other, earlier, the Mantino Sportsman's Club always puts on a great fireworks display. The village tries to, you know, help them financially in order to continue to be able to do that. So, with the payment of tonight's bills, there is an $8,000 approval for Mantino Sportsman's Club. They will be picking up the check tomorrow to help defray some of the costs for the fireworks. Fireworks are scheduled for July 3rd at dusk. So, anybody that's, you know, wishes, I'd say, they always do a great job and we're happy to participate with them because we give them a little bit of the money. It costs a lot more than that and they do all the work. We appreciate their participation. Thank you, Mr. Geske. General Government, Mr. Phillips.
I have nothing on the agenda this tonight, Mayor.
So, the items that will be voting on the consent agenda are as follows. Under old business nothing, under new business ordinance 1909, an ordinance amending Title IV Police Regulations Chapter 2 Minor's Curfew by repealing Section 4-2-9 Tobacco of the Municipal Code for the Village of Mantino and by amending Title IV Police Regulations Chapter 1 Misdemeanor Code Article 4 Offenses Involving Health, Safety, and Children by adding Section 4-1-4-18 Tobacco and Related Products of the Municipal Code of the Village of Mantino. And the payment of the bills is the amount of $104,050, of which 24, $997.82 are tip one bills. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be voted on individually? Seeing none, I accept the motion to take the single roll call vote of the question of passage of the agenda items as read. Motion by Martin.
A second.
Second by Boyce. Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Doe?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries. Comments tonight, Mr. Williams?
No comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Doe?
I forgot to mention about Live 360 for July 16th. They're having a field trip to Plauchmann's Mustard Tour. Meet at Plauchmann's at 1333 Boudreaux Road. I assume that would be 9:00 o'clock with a meeting at 9:00. Do you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're to drive over there?
That's what they're saying.
Okay.
Yeah. And if you see Sam tomorrow, wish him happy birthday.
Yes.
And that's all.
Thank you.
Mr. Geske?
No.
Mrs. Phillips?
No.
I have nothing further. I hope everyone who's here has a good Fourth of July. I would say, please be patient with the cleanup. It's not, it's, you know, something that's gonna take, take some time, but we'll do the best we can. If you've got an emergency or a branch that's on a wire or something that you feel is dangerous, make sure that you call 911 if it's an actual danger situation. If it's just something you're concerned about, you can call the Village Hall. Village Hall will be closed on Thursday for the Fourth of July, but any other time, they're open to take, you know, any information that you have. With that, I would accept the motion.
Okay.
Motion by Boyce.
Second.
Second by Phillips. Roll call.
Boyce?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Doe?
Yes.
Yes.